And now that we do have everyone at the table and the public invited back in, I will call the official Iowa City Public Library Board of Trustees meeting to order. And because we have new faces at the table, I think it'd be nice if we could take a minute to introduce ourselves. And I can start. My name is Dan Stevenson. I've served on the library board since 2021. Came in at the tail end of the extreme craziness with COVID and really found it quite meaningful to be here. Outside of this role, I'm a teacher in the West Liberty Community School District.
I'm Bonnie Boothroyd. I joined the board April of last year, so I'm kind of a newbie on the board. And I am a retired educator.
I'm Joseph Masa. I've been on the board, I think, for about two and a half years now. Two years, seven months, actually. I'm counting and my day job is a psychologist and I'm the executive director of a mental health organization here in Iowa City. And I'm a farmer. Do all that.
Pass it to Robin. I guess you're next as we go around the room.
I'm Robin. I think I'm a little hesitant. I think this is my 14th year. So I'm an unusual situation, but I'm also the county representative. So I represent Johnson County overall, so my appointment is a little bit different. And right, I'm thinking, what else do I need to do? I'm presiding over the board this year. I should have said that. And I am in Maine right now, presiding over the Great Books Foundation discussions in Maine. So just, I usually am in person. Today's, I'm just ahead.
I'm Corey Schweigel-Stears, brand new member to the board. Wonderful to see all of you. I guess this all must have you last month, but more official capacity. Day job, work as an application developer with the University of Iowa, an office of strategic communications. Maintain their website platform there. And then outside of that, you know, writer, reader, longtime library librarian.
John?
I'm John Rayburn. I've been on the board since 2022. And I'm blessedly retired from the English Department at the university and the late lamented American Studies Department as well, which has been killed by the trustees.
The trustees
I'm Callie Asstrom, a new board member. I'm really happy to be here. I love the ICPL. Thank you to all of you. And I work at the nonprofit arts organization Public Space One, and I'm an artist also.
I'm Kelsey Patrant-Frey, also new to the board, and I'm an attorney with Minneapolis based law firm focused on small businesses.
Welcome.
I'm Claire Matthews. I'm a teacher librarian here in the Iowa City Community School District. I have, I work at two elementary schools, Lucas and Twain, and I've been with the board since the end of 2021.
And I'm Anne Mangano, and I am serving as the interim library director. But I am also the collection services coordinator, and I've worked here for 17 years.
All right, welcome to our new members and welcome to the public as well. Our next item on the agenda is public discussion, and so I will oh, I'm sorry, the next the next item on the agenda is approval of the July 24 board meeting agenda that was included in the packets. Are there any questions on those minutes? If not, as, or I'm sorry, we're approving the board agenda, not the board minutes. I'm sorry, Robin. Sorry. Is, are there any additions to the board, to tonight's agenda? If not, I'll ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Boo.
That good.
Bonnie, with that, we'll have the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, and we pass that one. My apologies, sir. Now we can move on to the public discussion. I will share our board policy in relation to the two public comment which is, members of the public may address the board at the beginning of the meeting during the public comment agenda item where we are now. Individual comments are limited to no more than five minutes and may be extended by the presiding officer. Library staff time will not be used to prepare materials for public comment. Individuals addressing the board must sign in, as I believe you have, in order to comply with open meeting laws and proper meeting procedure. Trustees cannot engage in discussion or debate during the public comment period. And with that, I'd like to welcome our guests. I welcome to join us.
Thank you. And five minutes is generous because Cruz only gives them three minutes. That council means. He makes sure nobody takes more than three minutes. Anyway, I moved here. I've been a resident since late November 1978. One of my first votes here was for the bond issue for the library in 1979. And I, of course, was in the old library. And in this one, I've been in here a lot ever since then, 46 years. I had a lot of contact with Lolly and Susan, previous directors. They were both very helpful to me. I do ask questions. John mentioned something about what am I going to be doing tonight to, what questions am I going to raise? But I'm not raising any questions. But they were both extraordinarily helpful to me. They were both very friendly as well. I would see them also out in the community. I've been a volunteer at the farmer's market for 25 years. I would see them there. I would talk to them there. And very impressive, both. And so I'm here today to urge you to appoint Anne as the permanent director. She's been very helpful to me, answered all my questions about all sorts of things all over the library. I haven't bothered her since she became interim director. She's got enough to deal with without me. So, no, but she's seriously been very helpful to me, very personal. I see her out in the community. And I think that's important. I think it's important. The library has to sell itself for all kinds of things. So it's important to choose somebody who knows the inside and out of this place and is also out in the community. And in particular, Anne really knows nonfiction books because I read a lot of nonfiction. And she's been extraordinarily helpful to me with that. She's also, you know, taken the time to explain to me how eBooks and audiobooks and all that stuff I don't partake in, you know, aware that is rising to and so on and so forth. And I found that very helpful. You know, and so that is really all I'm going to say. I'd be, since I think you said nobody can back and forth with me. I'm at the farmer's market every Saturday morning, all morning in the front, greeting people. I'd be happy to talk to any of you. But my really truly, really main thing, only thing is to urge you to nominate and appoint Anne as permanent director. Okay?
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And with that, we will move on to our discussion items. Our first item is the strategic planning update, which was provided in packet. And I will turn it over to interim director Mangano for highlights you'd like to share and then open up for any board questions or decisions.
Yeah, so this report serves pretty much as a progress report of where we are, filling our goals and objectives for the current strategic plan. So we have a three-year plan. We're about two thirds of the way through. So this FY26 that we're in right now is the last year. But this goes over the last six months of the, so the second half of FY25. The reporting in this is a little odd because it's an accumulation of everything we've done over the past two years. And so we have a color code coded chart. And so anything that's filled in with the kind of the gray is there's an update. If there's bolding in that square, it means that we've made us, we've already made progress on that, but we have additional progress to report on. So if there's any questions about that, let me know. And then just to let you know that although this is a public document in that it exists in a board packet, it's really intended for you as an audience. And then we'll use this as the basis for other types of reporting. So when we go to the city council or if we create an annual, or when we create an annual report, or if we provide stuff in our newsletter, we'll write it for a different audience.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any board questions about the
I've got some suggestions and I've made copies. I don't know who's, anybody not get this copy of possible changes?
I didn't.
I've made enough for the whole group, so don't, don't be, yeah.
Okay. I would take one as well. Sorry.
Yeah, these are all very modest changes. I don't think they're substantive. But since the board will have to pass on the entire document, it's probably, this is the time to put it into shape. So so I moved the adoption of these things.
I can't, I don't have a copy.
Would you have a copy? Would you like me to read them?
No, no, it's just I'm going to say on the, on the additions that are being added to the packet. I mean, they weren't included with the packet, so.
That's because the secretary wasn't there. I sent it over on Monday and so it didn't get sent out.
And so there are the two items for strategic plan review.
There's two, one thing to just, there is no need for a vote on this. It's just an update to you. And the second thing is, yeah, this is just some grammatical changes that we can, we can
Okay. The medical, fine.
And there's, there's just two of them and it's
Thank you. It helps me.
Yeah, and diction.
Diction usage.
There any other comments or input on the strategic plan update?
Yeah.
So I was looking at the addition of the hearing loops and the T coil options, which is fantastic. I'm a hearing aid user and the last time I got any hearing aids was maybe five years ago now. And my audiologist was telling me at the time, like, nobody really has T coils in Iowa City. You don't need to worry about that when you're getting your hearing aids. I wondered, because you're getting this new technology here, if you've reached out to local audiologists to let them know that so that when they're, you know, talking to people about their choices, they would know that the public library has T coil now.
Thank you for sharing that.
And I wondered if that would be, since the foundation was involved in some of that acquisition, he's probably going to help with some of that work.
I thought what you were going to ask me was that there's going to be a change in technology related to hearing loops or there's a, there's going to be
Not that I know of.
And we talked about those options, but they said it's about five to 10 years away. And so we thought it would be best to purchase this, purchase the existing technology and then in five to 10 years when we're thinking of these spaces again, adopted that technology gets ready. Yeah, but that's a great, that's a great point. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other input? If not, we will move on to the Library Board of Trustees annual report as compiled. And this is an action item. And I do note, we do have from John some diction and usage suggestions. But before we get to those, I would ask if anyone has any thoughts, feedback on the Board of Trustees annual report.
I just want to say, Anne, I want you for doing this because usually this is a collaboration between the board and the staff, and the staff took, put a lot of work into this.
Thank you.
Well, good level.
And, you know, one thing I just wanted to mention was that it will come back in August. So any feedback that you have here, we can incorporate into the document and then you can vote out of then.
I would like to just put something on the table for consideration. I'm wondering if we might want to add an item in here about the fact that we support collaboration between the library and city departments. For example, Parks and Rec, you know, we've worked a lot with the city attorney's office and finance and HR. And it just seems that the council might appreciate knowing that we reach out and we really do try to collaborate between the two organizations. So for consideration.
Good idea.
Other thoughts on items to be included? Then I will pass it to John for diction and usage suggestions.
Well, I think these are all self-explanatory. So I, what I wanted to do was not have to go through them line by line, but you see things here in you, in the diction and usage, which are mostly what these are about, that I passed over. I'd be glad to know, or we would be glad to know of them. And the one thing is, the report claims that we have these three new members that were brought into the into the organization in the last year. And as my understanding is, they didn't begin until January, or July, July 1st of this year, of this fiscal year.
I guess we were pointing to the fact that we oriented them in June.
Right. They've already been trained.
Appointed and
Oriented.
Oriented.
Yes, we can, changed it from welcomed, but
Bonnie, when did you start though? Were you fiscal year 25?
It was April of, excuse me, April of 2024.
Oh, so you would be in fiscal year 24.
Yeah, I remember when exactly you started in 24. Okay, I barely do.
To be fair. It looks like the first several items are primarily diction. We've cleared up the question of welcoming them. I believe we did welcome them. I think that is good terminology. Item seven suggests a semicolon. Item nine is language-based and item 11 is also grammatical. Anne, you said that this is going to be brought back in August. Are we approving the current draft tonight? I did see it is listed as an action item.
We don't have to.
Okay. In that case, we will bring that one back in August, incorporating input and changes as suggested.
I do, I'm sorry, I have one under legal responsibilities, the last bullet, I believe we don't need ing. Just for, to be parallel.
I appreciate your consistency points. Thank you, Bonnie. Excellent. In that case, we can move on to staff reports. The first item we have is the interim director's report as presented in the packet. I will offer you the opportunity to, if there's anything you'd like to highlight or add to.
I, I sent all of you an email about the Iowa Public Information Board training on open meetings and open records. They are doing a mad scramble to add dates, so I will send new dates as they come up. And we'll, hopefully they'll find a better way to offer that training.
And it is online, correct?
It is online.
Yep.
Yeah, but it's not asynchronous, right? You have to log in for the 90 minutes at that time.
Yes, you do.
August 26th is the second day of school. That's not It matters if you date since September.
But I'm hoping, I'm really hoping the state library steps up and offers that training specifically to library boards. And they've kind of indicated a little that they would, but right now they're just pointing it to the Iowa Public Relation, Iowa Public Information Board.
Are there any board questions or comments on the report?
There you may be grandfathered in as a standing board member. Now, as a standing board member, you know, if there's a hardship in August, you are not under this requirement at the moment. You individually.
But it's recommended that we all
Recommended. And it's a great training. I'm just saying, if the hardship, you may have some
The city council may require it of all existing board members.
May in the future, right, right.
May in the future. So we'll keep you up to date on that if there's any changes.
Given the increasingly scary stakes of it that Joseph mentioned earlier, yeah, it seems well worth doing. Any other comments or discussions? Thank you for that report. Our departmental reports, we have adult services first. I don't know if there's any items to add or share.
Can I just ask a question? Are you satisfied with the numbers for the programs? Because we don't have a strong reference point for that.
Yeah, the completion from last year, at the same time, I did the numbers three days apart, so there doesn't feel like a lot, but three days can, you know, it just depends. But we were down on completions, but it hasn't felt that way at the service point for whatever that's worth. And I guess I'll, I won't know everything until August. And I, I will say more importantly to me was the biggest change we made this year was to the prize. Yeah, we were no longer giving out trade paperback copies for fiscal reasons. As this back got more successful, it just became unsustainable, unsustainable financially. We used to do majority math market book prizes and that was 10 years ago, you could just, you could get a lot, hundreds of those. And it went a lot further because those were about $4 a copy to the $8 plus for these trade paperback size. So as we sort of had more people completing it, it just became more and more difficult to fund. And this year we decided instead to put the Friends gift towards the program experiences. And they have generously also done a donation of the coupons for the bookend. You can sort of tell that some people are like, where's my book? And then, so that could have something to do with completion. But as I was telling a coworker today, it's like, I think that the drive for us is more of participation and like challenging yourself to read extra in the subgroup. So we'll, we'll see what it ends up with. And then I have thoughts afterwards that for tweaking for next year. I have a long-term goal, like setting our own goal just for making it easier for everybody to participate and succeed at whatever their level is.
And I just want to know, people have been retrieving their gift certificates for a free book from the bookend, gleefully happily being able to pick out whatever they want from the store, which is kind of cool. And it also has, of course, increased sales in the bookstore because they get the free book and they also maybe saw another book that they wanted or they wanted to get for a friend. So we're just, we're really happy to continue this program with the summer amateur league program.
Are the summer hours in the bookend different? Because you had to do some hour limiting at one point and that might be a little bit of a hurdle for me. And maybe not only, but you know, there's just other things.
We continue to hear periodic feedback about the store not being open enough, but we just don't have enough volunteers to
Sure, sure.
Moving the opening time back a half hour after the library bookend has really helped us with the cadence of the shifts. So, and then, you know, everybody wants weekend hours. It's a little harder to get people on a Tuesday night.
Right. So I'm just wondering if that's a little bit of a factor. I don't know. That's totally anecdotal.
We do like the sale at the moment of gift is like, Ben, they're open now, but I see you have two young children. Today isn't the greatest day for you for the whole summer. So, yeah, it's been, I think it's still been pretty well received and like Kay was mentioning, you can find more. It worked really well last Saturday during the book sales because I could say there's a whole meeting room full of books for issues from downstairs. So if you can just have books still every But the other thing I was saying to somebody this week is program attendance is the same or higher so far this summer. So the, the program is more than just how many books can you read. And so I think it's the knowledge of the program has still been successful and the knowledge of what we offer still getting out there to people. It's just whether or not they choose to participate in the chat.
Fantastic. Any other comments or feedback? We also have the Community and Access Services Department report. Sam is not present, but is there, are there any things that board members have questions about?
Excellent.
Unrelated to anything, slightly unnerved by the picture of the perfect divorce in front of it, adorable teddy bear. Justin.
Claire, it gets even worse. If you've seen that book in real life, the edges of the paper are all, it looks like it's been dipped in blood.
Oh, my goodness.
The door side, it came back. We were like, what did, oh.
It was a talking piece, that placement, that placement with the teddy bear.
Publishers are getting very creative with the
Right. Yeah, I've seen that in my own life, but
Say that next Wednesday night, we are doing a public reception for Sam and to bring people for the attend. Sam is not here today. They are addressing the UN as part of their mission that they want to make this week.
Yeah, information about that event. So, yeah.
Is the, what's the format? Just drop in for a few minutes or is there a program associated with the
Yeah, there'll be, there's some remarks and then towards, there'll be an opportunity to share library stories.
That's Sam's slogan and what they ran on is our story sharing between the platform. And the more stories that they have to share up there, they're being used to this all of the town halls throughout the US and the world. They'll be in different library publications as well. So more that we can share the stories and how libraries are integral.
Thank you.
And just note, as you said, that's next Wednesday from 6:00 PM to 8:30. I'm sure able to make out. And if there's no more on that item, we can move on to the development reports. Which was included and included the 2.5% annual increase in funding. Maybe if you have additional items that you'd like to share or
I'm happy to answer any questions. We are, you know, we're blue set in motion with annual increase for the next five years. On top of that, we, we are going to be collecting a gift, which we're paying for our SNAP program. And I'll update more on that later, but we're also going to be growing that gift by just keeping it in a money market account over the period of the term of
Um, over the period of the term of that gift. So there'll be some, uh, management of that explained in the next upcoming packet in more detail.
Fantastic. Any questions from board members?
Just again, a thank you to the. The, um, foundation for all of this work that you do. I mean, very often you see your budget line increasing. Exciting. Thank you.
Fantastic. And, uh, we'll move on, uh, pass it to Robin for the President's Report.
Yeah, I don't have a lot I want to present. Um. Um, as the evening goes on, I realize we will have an opening on the Board of Trustees coming up. And I think I'll be in contact with the city council about the deadline complications. I apologize. Um, we do need someone who would like to join the Friends Foundation. So if you would like to be involved in that role, please let me know. Otherwise, I'll start begging. You'll get an email from me. Um. Excuse me. And the last thing is, um. Especially for new members who don't know exactly how this working, we have a working group that's looking at the hiring of a new director. This is not a committee. There are some, um, site differences, but you will receive updates from me. If you did not receive an initial update about where we are and asking you to hold a date in August, um, please let me know and I will resend it. Our last, uh, event in August is apt to include interviews with the Board of Trustees. And it is held during the business days. So if you can make it, that'd be wonderful, but I, but the working group will send you details about that as it gets closer. Um, we are not allowed to, um, respond to the entire group, um, by the working group because of. Uh, it would be a conflict of open meetings laws, which is one of the training things you'll, you'll learn about. Um, so we can send you updates, but I can respond to individuals if you have a question you need to ask me about process. I'm sorry, it's a little convoluted, um, but we are working with the city attorneys about how much freedom we have for discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Item seven is announcement, uh, from members and it looks like our, uh, foundation update, the memorandum. Random of understanding between the foundation's board of directors and the Iowa City Public Library of trustees, uh, that is included. Um, is that something that's been approved and signed or is that? Something that will be approved and signed?
Will be approved.
Will be approved and signed. And do we, it's not an action item, that's the, okay, next. Um. Do we have any advocacy updates?
No, we don't at this time. The session is. Oh, oh, go ahead. I mean, this is a bit was told. The working group hasn't met in advocacy recently, but. So for those of you who are interested in library advocacy, I'm sort of speaking to the new people. We would love to have people become actively involved. Our structure again is a working group structure. We tend to have a hot season that will be coming up most likely in the fall. Um, I don't know if you want to say more, Claire, since you're there face to face with everyone.
A bunch of what we do is based on the legislation, so watching bills, staying in the loop with. State, um, initiatives with the last couple of years we've been busy. But it's a very, it's a little bit of a tricky, um, timeline because it has to do with the legislative session. So a lot of library inverts bills happen and then are moved within a week or within a few days and it, um, so it's a little bit of. Timeline juggling in April, March and April in particular, when they're trying to bundle, but, um. I don't think there's anything in particular. So it's not like a year round time commitment. If it's something you're interested in.
We're hoping it's not a year round.
We're hoping it'll never be a year round time commitment, but some other small things are just to make general statements. There's a little bit of a value statement that we posted by our board pictures downstairs. A lot of what we do is to advocate and support the staff. So the staff knows that the trustees. Listening and supporting and involved in what's happening.
Uh, Claire, I just want to add for the, but of the group that, um, the government affairs committee through the Iowa Library Association. Is going to be working to turn around interpretation of legislation and, and impact of legislation, um, in an even more timely manner this year. So the members of that committee and this body could get on that mailing list and, um, and really benefit from, from some of those communications. Um, also, uh, um, there's, uh, there's opportunities to, to get involved as trustees and that kind of work that people are interested.
Fantastic.
I'm happy to hear that they're working on this timeliness, which has been the biggest issue.
Right. How quickly is things?
When I knew members added to the ILA, new trustees members, because they could have been receiving the, the updates this month.
Well, I'll talk to Jen about it. We'll get it up.
Okay. Which means more email for those of you who are new, but you'll get to see what the ILA actually does. There had previously been a trustee subdivision. They decided, um, to, to discontinue that. So your participation is, is as individuals. But also membership is covered by, has historically been covered within our budget by the library. So it's not at a cost to you individually.
And then in December, there's an opportunity to talk to Johnson County legislators through, we, um, the area libraries hold a legislative reception.
Oh. And, uh, what Robin alluded to, and I will add under announcements from members is, uh, that I am, uh, stepping down from the board, unfortunately. Um, after having served four years, um, and having the honor of being named vice president of the board. Um, I, I have decided that I'm going to run for Iowa City Community School, the district school board, which I am happy to talk with anyone about outside of our meeting. Um, and, uh, in order to devote the time that I need to that, uh, decided that I do need to step down from the board. So I really would like to thank, um, library staff, um, for all of the help in the four years on the board. And say to everyone that I've worked with on the board of really appreciated, uh, the, uh, collegiality and, uh. Uh, strong work of our board. So thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
And did you, from the city council, whether they will reopen the search or whether they will use the past applications? Cause the pool was larger than the appointees. Or can we have some follow-up on that? Cause I know some of the, the past appointees have caught, or not past, but past applicants have caught wind that we may have an opening. And they've each replied.
They're gonna post the, um, the opening on August 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and, uh, moving on, under communications, we did have the news articles shared, uh, in the packet, which was. It's the one, that's correct, uh, from the little village. Uh, it's summertime. Um, and with that, uh. We will move to the, uh, consent agenda that I was, so you get to at the start of the meeting, uh, and approve the, uh, minutes of the Library Board of Trustees from June 26. I will just add as a comment, I was not at the meeting, but I really did appreciate, uh, the discussion in that related to the closing of the, the state historical. Society building here in Iowa City, which is a, I mean, incredible, uh, sad development. And are there, we approved these as one, both the minutes and the dispersments. Uh, are there comments or questions related to the minutes for the, uh, dispersments for June? And if not, I will, uh, call the vote on that. All those in favor, say aye. Oh, I'm, thank you, Joseph. Oh, oh, Robin, I'm sorry. Excellent, uh, motion from Joseph and sounded like a second from Bonnie. Thank you. Uh, and with that, I will call the vote. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, nay, and none abstained. Thank you. Uh, looking at the agenda for the August meeting, um, looks like coming up is continuing education, intellectual freedom and library values. Uh, appointment of a new vice president and the foundation board roles. Please, uh, follow up with Robin if you have, are interested in those. Uh, adoption of the Board of Trustees' annual report, fourth quarter financials and statistics, as well as. Uh, departmental reports. Are there any items to add to that list? And if not, we can.
There, there is a possibility that on that agenda, there will be a discussion of the recommended director applicant. I, it's not written there, however, it, depending on the timing of the working group, we are hoping to close by the end of August. And it may be, um, we may be able to have that discussion at that meeting. I just wanted to give our own farewell.
Yeah.
Hey, Jason, would you be willing to throw some very brief summer reading statistics in that? Oh, it's on your, it'll be your adult services, little numbers will be included in yours. Lovely. I'm just curious.
Apparently on the right page.
I said, yeah.
Missed that one too.
I mean, but, uh, well, I, I, I said when I was, you know, when I was talking about when to resign, that August meeting with the back to school is always so hard to make it to begin with. So, um, yeah, um. So, uh, with that, uh, not Tom Rockland like members.
I want one, I'm sorry, I want one more minute.
Yep.
I want to thank Dan for the time he served on the trustees. You know, I know people have personal lives and it takes a lot of time and Dan's been a wonderful colleague to work with and I'm very appreciative of the time. I think everyone is of the time and the, and the sacrifice it takes in your life to commit to being on the trustees. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that.
Onto more on the school board.
Yeah, one meeting, one meeting a month was not enough. So, yeah, no, I've been rearranging a lot of things in my life around this. So, uh, with that, we will adjourn the meeting.